All righty, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council to an end. Autumn, please call the roll.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Ms. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Marmee.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Riletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
And Mr. Buck.
We have all present this evening. Next on the agenda is the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Understand?
Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to be here. We ask that as we get into the colder winter months, although today is beautiful, that you be with our citizens, especially those who are homeless or who have difficulties with having the heat that they need, and be with them and help them in any way that you can. We also ask that, thank you so much for the blessings of freedom, the fact that we live in a country where we can elect our officials. We ask that you be with us as we, although many of us have different opinions about issues, that we are able to work together. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we may make the laws for the city of Newark. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Mr. Moran, you want to leave us now?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Buck. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything that may concern them about the agenda this evening. Do we have any? All right. Next, we have the minutes of our October 19, 2015, meeting. Do we have a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have two reports this evening of standing committees, one from Finance and one from Recreation. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under appointments this evening, Mayor Hall is making two appointments tonight. These do have to be voted on by council. Mayor Hall is appointing Jeff Harris to the City of Newark Tax Incentive Review Council. He will complete the remainder of his past members' term, and then his two-year term will begin January 1, 2016, and expire December 31, 2017. I guess we'll just do a voice vote, if that's okay. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
One opposed? Nine passed. That passes. Next, we have Mayor Hall also appointing Jeff Harris to Licking County Tax Incentive Review Council. He will complete the remainder of his past members' term, and then his two-year term will begin January 1, 2016, and expire December 31, 2017. Again, we'll vote on that. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Aye.
Also passes nine. We have three reports from city officials tonight. One, two from Stephen Johnson, our auditor, operating report for the period ending September 30, 2015. I understand the auditor of the state released the audit report for the year 2014, and there weren't any findings or adjustments required. And the other one is from Barb Jobs, our tax administrator, income tax revenue report for the period ending October 15, 2015. Without objection, those reports will be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have three. One from Paul Moran, his comments regarding issues at Newark City Council's October 19, 2015, meeting. One from ASME Local 2963 Leadership, an update on the safety concerns regarding staffing in the radio room at the Newark Police Department. And the last from Zaron von Meter, a letter regarding his concern about a resident and her son operating a backyard breeding business in their home. Without objection, those three will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for citizens' comments. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to make a comment and to be heard. Do we have anyone for the first section of citizens' comments?
I'm Evan Butcher, 263 Union Street. My neighbors been come to me, complaining about the alley in back of my left. And they seem to, they like to know when the alley where I live at is going to get tore up, repaved. I told them, look, the city can do one thing at a time. I know the streets comes first, but after they do the streets, they can do the alleys. Now, I didn't soon realize that. And my top 10 forecast should be most clear tonight, though, if it's 6:00 tomorrow, high on your 72, 75 by late in the afternoon. That passes.
Dr. Williams? Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? If you want to raise your hand. Okay. We'll move on to legislation. We have ordinances on the second reading, 15-28.
Ordinance 15-28 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson, an ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain appointed officials of the city of Newark, Ohio, and repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith.
You've heard the second reading of 15-28. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 15-28.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd. Second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on 15-28?
This is just something that we need to do. We do it every time we get into another election cycle, and it simply deals with those people who will be in office after January 1 of 2016.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes. 15-28 passes 10-0. Next, we have 15-29.
Resolution 15, or excuse me, ordinance 15-29 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, an ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain elected officials of the city of Newark, Ohio, and repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith.
You've heard the second reading of 15-29. What does your wish? Mrs. Floyd.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance 15-29.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 15-29? Mrs. Floyd.
Again, this is something that we are doing for elected officials. These are people, again, who will take office after January 1, 2016.
Any other discussion on 15-29? Mr. Marmee.
Mr. President, I'm just going to indicate that I will not be supporting this, although I am, I do have a belief that the auditor is deserving of a raise. I just don't feel like we can give raises at this point, and with our budget, and there are many other positions within the city that are deserving of raises, but we just don't have it within our budget. So, I can't support anything that has raises involved.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anything else? Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I just wanted to point out that I strongly support this small raise for the city auditor, bringing Steve Johnson up to the same level as the cabinet over a four-year period. It would have been nice if we could have brought him up to that level at one time, but because of the fiscal concerns that we all know exist, and the point that Mr. Marmee made, even though I will say that council on numerous occasions has not hesitated within the last year to give raises, that far exceeded this. And, but, you know, not only is he worthy of it, I think we need to keep him around, and I think it's only right that our city auditor, with all the responsibility he has with a multimillion-dollar budget that he has to manage, and keep us on a fiscally sound footing, that 8 percent and a half a year, or exactly what this worked out to, might have been a little less than that, was totally appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie, anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
No.
Mr. Raff.
No.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
No. Seven-three? Seven-three, that passes. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 15-94.
Resolution 15-94 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Johnson, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard the second reading of 15-94. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt a 15-94.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-94? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
15-94 passes 10-0. Next, we have the resolutions on the first reading, 15-97.
Resolution 15-97 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-97 will be held for a second reading in two weeks. Next, we have 15-98.
Resolution 15-98 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-98. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Move to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
I'm dealing with some reimbursements of funds, and there's timelines related to them.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Autumn, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Two-day reading rules have been waived. Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-98.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any other discussion on 15-98? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes. 15-98 passes 10-0. And finally, this evening, we have 15-99.
Resolution 15-99 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Johnson, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Newark to pay bills on behalf of Division of Police pursuant to Section 5705.41D, then and now certification, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-99.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-99?
Mr. President, this is just an emergency because of dealing with, had some paperwork with some purchase orders completed, and so we're just trying to get this legislation through to pay the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Riletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
And Mr. Buck.
Yes.
15-99 passes 10-0. And that concludes our legislation for this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. Again, this is your second opportunity. Again, the same rules apply. Do we have any? William?
My name is Evan Butcher, 263 Union Street. I'd like to know when the city's going to do Union Street, and let's see if the street paved. And as near as my mind is, speeders going up and down Union Street, hot running, screeching their brakes, everything else, playing live music. I'd like to know if the city could do something about that. And generally, I'm still looking for old traffic light, or old emergency light I could use in my apartment. That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher. Anyone else for this second section?
I'm Peggy Jones, 1115 Wilmington Court in Newark.
I came here tonight to, to kind of upset with some of the nasty political things that's been going on, and I feel badly about it. I think we have a great council, great mayor, great city of Newark, and I hate to see where people have problems with one another, because I think we're all elected to work together for the good of our community, our city, our citizens, and I don't think politics should enter into that. I think we're all here for the common goal. The other thing is, I'm very unhappy and sad that Mark Guthrie is no longer going to be with us as of the 31st of December. Is that correct? You have been a great person for the city of Newark. You have worked diligently, long hours, you've supported, you've been around, you've supported everybody regardless of who you were, independent Republican Democrat, and you will be greatly blessed. I hate to see you go. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else? Mr. Crawford?
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. Some of us are used to being ignored. Day in and day out, the struggles of the downtrodden are dismissed as a consequence of each poor soul's personal failures. Society has, at times, gleefully disregarded the scourge of poverty because its solutions require a cultural shift of which we are desperately in need. My primary plea and calling in life is for these unheard voices to be given a microphone to speak, and an ear to hear what they have to say. How often do we truly listen to one another? Are we satisfied with the sound of our own voice and the cacophony of those which tend to side with us? Does it suffice that our attention is given to friendly praise but is conspicuously lacking at the moment that criticism rears its unpopular head? I dare say that we've become complacent with respect to the conditions of working people, including the men and women who would like to work but are having difficulty pulling themselves up, since it is much easier to point the finger at them and assign blame accordingly for their lack of fortune. Even so, there is a desire to succeed among those, these supposed takers in our midst. They do not want a life to be given to them on a silver platter. No. What they want is a shot at the same happiness that their more affluent brothers and sisters have enjoyed for so long. What they demand is recognition of their human dignity and a social contract which regards their plight or triumph as a fate shared by the whole of our community. Here lately, council has taken some actions deserving of applause for lifting a few of the obstacles trapping us in a cycle of relentless economic despair, namely the vote to delay the box on city job applications. Still, more can and must be done, and the path forward is dependent on the participation of the least fortunate in concert with others who are dedicated to fighting poverty. The Band-Aids can no longer suffice for a problem which has harmed countless men, women, and children for generations. What we need is a strategy to win the war on poverty by seeing the impoverished as partners in waging such as opposed to mere pawns on a political chessboard. Listen for a moment, and I promise that we will see the emergence of amazing solutions to the many challenges facing the poor. Don't dismiss the answers they may have for affordable housing, rental registration, job creation, curbing homelessness, improving transportation, and whatever other matters may come to mind. After all, they are the ones living in these conditions. Is it so difficult to believe that some of them may have thought at length about how society can help lift them up? Poverty is not an individual struggle because its consequences infect the rest of society. For that reason, combating this plague cannot be left to the impoverished alone to fight on a person-by-person basis. Choosing to separate ourselves from the life experience of others is not an appropriate response to the cries for help that regularly emanate from them. We owe it to one another, especially to our children and their children, to pull out the earplugs and prepare to work hard as a unit for a remedy to these ills. An election is at hand. Regardless of its outcome, I am pleading with the members of this, our city government, to remember the people without a lobby. Their success is your success, and the same must be said of their shortcomings. Illuminating the future of Newark, not unlike setting up the lights on a beautiful Christmas tree, is dependent on ensuring that every man, woman, and child receives equal treatment and ultimately has a chance to shine. And, you know, concluding, I want to thank, you know, everyone for what I think has been, with few exceptions, a relatively, I don't know, peaceful election campaign. It's been great that, in lieu of opinion polls, we've been able to have a clear head moving forward. I think those are distractions to our democracy and a cancer on it, as you can see at the higher levels of government. So, no, regardless of what happens tomorrow night, this has been an amazing experience for me, and you can plan on, no matter what happens, seeing my face in the future, you know, regardless of whether you like that or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone else? Mr. Moran?
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. I want to speak on the topic of courage. Courage is defined in the New Webster's Dictionary as "the capacity to meet danger without giving way to fear." Now, I have three quotes here I want to share that stand out. The first quote is, "It takes vision and courage to create; it takes faith and courage to prove." That's by O.N.D. Young. "Second, courage is resistance to fear, mastery of fear, not absence of fear," Mark Twain. "This is no time for ease and comfort; it is a time to dare and endure," Winston Churchill. And I brought this topic up, courage. It's, I'm saying this as a thank you to all our war veterans. November 11th, next Wednesday. They fully understand courage nothing better than any of us would ever think of, what they've gone through, losing comrades and buddies, seeing body parts and stuff laying around. They've gone through a lot, our war veterans. And I'm glad that we do take one day, a whole day out of the year, across this nation, because it's the appropriate thing to do. And we have our 10:30 a.m. parade next Wednesday from the Courthouse Square to West Main to North Sixth Street, followed by the 11 a.m. service at Veterans Park. And I hope we all can have the courage to take a little time out and do our part in supporting them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Anyone else? Anyone for administration this evening? Let's see, Mr. Johnson is not here. The Honorable Law Director, Mr. Sassen. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Blake?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cost. Never mind. I'll get right there in a minute. Mr. Cost. Let's try it out. I wondered why you looked shocked over there. [laughter] I just need to call for a services committee meeting. With that, I'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mrs. Floyd?
Several things. I appreciate your comments on what council should be, because I think for the most part, we're all up here because we love Newark and because we want to see Newark be the best place it can. And I think that happens best when we work together. And tomorrow's Election Day, and we all know as a retired civics teacher, I'm going to say everybody should go vote. My guess is almost everybody in this room has probably already voted, but if you haven't or if you know other people, then you need to go vote. Mr. Daniel, I know we don't do enough to fight poverty, but I'm volunteering now for United Way, and they do, are working with that bus that's going to the beauty park. There are now 45 people going daily to the beauty park. They're picked up from St. Vincent de Paul and the Salvation Army and other places around town. Churches around town are providing lunches for them. Most of these are now dinners because it's a second shift, I think. But some of those people are getting advancements in their job. They're not just at the lowest possible level, and I think, I know the problem is large, but every little bit helps, and I think that's something that's very valuable and it's something we can be proud of in Newark. Thirdly, you know, last week I talked about Safe Trick or Treat. If you weren't there, you missed a fun time. I love that part. I mean, there were a thousand kids down on the square. There truly were. Because most people, right, Chief Connell? Most people ran out of goodies to pass out because there were so many, so many kids there, and most of them were there with families, parents, grandparents, whoever. And it's just really neat to see that. And if you miss Spooky Town Bash, you missed seeing Jeremy Blake in a buffed-up Superman costume. I mean, when he can walk in there, it's like, really? You missed this. And finally, to him my plug for the Midland, every year the Midland does the Nutcracker, and it includes some professionals from Columbus, but largely students from dance studios in several different counties who come and perform over Thanksgiving weekend. It's a great show if you've got children or grandchildren or, you know, it's just a great show. The first time I went, I thought, yeah, well, for a local production, this is probably going to be very good. And it's wonderful, and there's enough narration that if somebody isn't familiar with the story, you understand what's going on. But the dancing is beautiful. It's a beautiful show, so if you can go, go. And with that, I will pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake was leaking tall buildings with a spinkle down there the other day. He had a really excellent costume. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the fact that Carol mentioned Spooky Town. And I did not get to see Superman, but I did see Shrek. And Bob Handel did a pretty good job with Shrek, I'll say that. Yeah, some really good comments tonight. I want to thank Paul for his comments about 11/11 coming up here real soon, and I appreciate the fact that you remind us all that we need to be there. And for those of you who have not been there, it's really a very nice event, and there's always a nice turnout for it, which sort of is heartwarming to see that. I was, you know, along the lines of courage, Paul, I know that everybody has seen this by now, this poison piece that was done on Albert, on Mr. Riletta, and I just want to say that I don't think the person who did this learned much about courage because they didn't have the guts to put their name on it. But it is sort of sad. Matter of fact, it's the first time I can remember, I was subjected to these things for years when I was in legislature. But that was sort of viewed as big-time, next-level politics, but this is the very first time I've seen a political party do a poison mailing on a city council candidate, and that is amazing. And it was enough to make me sick, and I hope it did others. Daniel, you know, I'll tell you, in so many ways, you're the conscience of this community, and I really appreciate your words. And, you know, I appreciate the point that Carol made about transportation being provided. I do think that, you know, and I know we had a financial dilemma, but I will never, ever feel that by relinquishing our transportation program with the county, I just don't think that was a good move in the long run. And it has, I think, hindered our residents in getting services that they, that they should receive. On a lighter note, on my way here this evening, I saw the, or I heard, I listen quite often to WLW out of Cincinnati because I'm a Reds and a Bengal fan, and they always have really cute promos. And the promo that they got going on right now is promo, promoing the Thursday night ballgame between the Bengals and the Browns. And they started out, they started out by saying, "Ohio has two great football teams, the Cincinnati Bengals and the Ohio State Buffets. And then we have the Cleveland Browns." So with that, I'll let the Brown fans take exception. Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie, Ms. Hall?
No, thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson?
Well, a couple things. One thing I wanted to say is that when I was out for, at the time, I missed council meeting, Autumn does a tremendous job of getting the minutes of all the committees and everything together and to us, and I think that she deserves accolades for that. So, I just wanted to say that. And the other thing I discovered today is National Epitaph Day. So I thought I'd tell you my favorite epitaph. Beneath these trees lie silent peas. Beneath this sod lies peas pod, but peas shout out and go on to God.
Mr. Johnson? I'm surprised you missed that, Mr. Sassen.
I'm disappointed in myself.
Mr. Marmy?
I don't know what all you guys are talking about, about what's going on tomorrow, some election or something. Tomorrow, over a century ago, I think one of, someone up here was born, I think it was a century, maybe a century and a half. Don?
That's fine. That's fine. Mark? Sixty-two, not quite a century.
Oh, okay. But everybody wished on a happy birthday, Mark.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Certainly. And with that, I will pass.
Mr. Raff?
Thanks, I'll just encourage everybody to vote tomorrow, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake? Now adjourned.
Now it's my turn, yeah. Really, just a lot of thank yous. Spooky Town Bash was the first time that we put on a big event like that. I think it was successful. You know, the rain did kill the attendance towards the middle of the event, but, you know, I thought we were coming, coming strong. We had a lot of families there, and I thought it was really good until the rain sprinkled down for like maybe 10 or 15 minutes, and then people went home, and I just wanted to hurl them around and say, "No, stay." But, you know, but it was fun. It was fun, and I think we, we learned a lot from Saturday, and had a, had a real good committee to work to pull it together. And a lot of thank yous even amongst this council. Did some face painting. Alex attended. Don worked the beer garden, and Mark attended, and Carol worked the information desk. So thank you very much for all your help, for being supportive of that.